Bring the one Barton Board of Selecting meeting to order. Um Thursday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty four. We have a full Board of Selectmen present. Lord Agent just came in, Town Administrator. We have Fred Nolan video recorded for the public. And some members of the public. I'm gonna do some old business first, guys, the uh previous board meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May sixteenth, twenty twenty four as amended.
Mike, you wanna second that?
I wasn't, but I'm staying.
Oh, okay, I'll second the motion. Are we all in favor?
Aye, and I abstain.
There you go, Jeff. Start a pile for we're gonna do it, I think. Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment. Anything, Fred?
No.
Okay, see no other members of the public here. I'll close public comment. Coming back to town business. We have Holly Zeller here from Everett Road, or for Everett Road. Uh lot E three dash O two dash thirty. Um on a class six section of Everett Road. And for full disclosure, I'm gonna let it know, be known that I did graduate with Holly Zeller. Went through high school with her. I don't think she's.
She's not that old.
Probably not.
She is.
So, the whole disclosure, I just wanna, I don't think anything I'm gonna do here to make it affect my decisions, but I'll leave it to the applicant. Do you want me to recuse myself, or you're all set?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, just wanna put that out there.
Thank you.
Um you guys can go ahead and present your case. We do have some um legwork, uh leaned in for us, the Town Administrator.
Okay.
Showing us the original approval from the um application from the planning board.
Yep.
We have a copy of their lot. Um where it comes down touches Everett Road.
Yep. Yes.
And the original subdivision here. And also, she did a blow up of the notes on the subdivision with the.
Yes.
Um the applicant at the time had agreed to some um road building, road building structures.
So currently, I still.
And one other thing, we have a timeline of the entire subdivision and the approvals from the building department.
Okay, I don't know if I have that, but I need it necessarily.
We'll get you a copy of that.
Thank you. So, these other two lots here, I've sold.
Okay.
Both to, well, this to Steven Drews and his father, and I I do have an email from him here too, speaking to those. But what we wanted to come before you today and and request was being able to build on this lot as it is as a class six road. With some improvements made to the road, um we would widen it, we would um address some of the slope at the beginning. Um we would address the drainage, of course, and we would do a hammerhead turnaround at the top of our lot. Um, you know, understanding that there's gonna be one home here. Um Steven plans to build on his lot as stated in his email, not for at least two years, if not longer, and his father, who owns this lot, never intends to build. So we're looking at at most two homes um on this road. And so our request was to vote, to be able to build on it as a class six, to not make it a road that the town then had to maintain. Um then we maintain it, we would put our mailbox up here on the regular Everett, you know, or on the turn there where the subdivision is over here. Um, you know, so there was no need for mail delivery down there. And we would, um I do have some pictures of the road as it stands now. This is, this is from the top. This would be if you were standing over here at the subdivision, looking towards the road. That was my son Curtis, he's, he took the pictures.
Just to clarify.
Yep. Absolutely, yep. And this is another, show these to all of you guys to see. So this is the road looking down, and where you can see that daylight coming is here, which is from down looking up. So that's, that's where, that's where our lot is. And that kind of plays out. This is at the lot. And this is from the lot then looking down, further down the hill. So yeah, this would be if you were coming, if you went down Everett Road right now, this is where it then goes to the extension. And where we wanna build is here, I mean, not in the middle of the road, obviously, but just off the side here, our driveway would be over here.
About eighty-two phases down.
Okay. Um. Can you see that front picture?
Yeah, this one here.
Yeah, that one and the other lot.
Absolutely, yeah, this one's from the top.
I just wanna go over a couple of things here.
Yeah.
I'm gonna read some notes off the original subdivision, just so we can kinda get everybody on the same page. The density over there was three acre minimums, which I think that lot used to be.
This one is just over three, yes.
Just over three, and the other ones are larger.
Yes.
They all have two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, um is as a requirement there, and the setbacks on all sides are forty feet. Um, total lot was seventeen point oh four acres before. Um, there was some notes on here, and um I'm just gonna give you guys a little background. We do have applicants come for Guinea Road a couple of years back, and I think it might have been the other guy that purchased your.
Okay.
Lots down further.
Okay.
Um on the old Everett Road down here. And on both those applications, um we stuck pretty hard to a um upgrade of the class six road to a town standard of class five. And it's just slightly under our regular road standards.
Okay.
Um and Jeff can go over those further. But I just wanna let you know that we have had two applicants in my recent history. I've been a selectman now for seven years, but within the last two years, we've had the issue come up. And um previous select boards a long time ago would allow some building on the class six roads with a waiver provided to the town for emergency services.
Yeah.
But we've kinda gone away from that now.
It does say something about that, I think, on that plan too.
Yeah, so I just wanted to go over those. No building permits shall be granted until the roadway is constructed to a gravel surface to town standards. See the land subdivision regulations. Uh the roadway shall be constructed to the above standard for a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet of frontage per lot. Or to the driveway, whichever is further. I do know that the previous applicant, we did make him go all the way to the end of his lot, so that way the next person passed him could, cause I think he was the middle lot at the time. The above can be done for each lot as a building permits are granted, but a turnaround will be required if done in phases. And it also says on here, when the building permits are granted, a waiver form regarding class six road shall be signed by the lot owners. This should be done at any time prior to the town acceptance of the road. So what that means is after the road is upgraded to a class five standards for town. If you come in and petition the town for a layout of the road, we accept that as a layout of road. There's another whole schedule that we can go through as selectmen. Once we've done that, then we will actually maintain that section of road.
Mm-hmm.
And um then that requirement for the um emergency vehicle and stuff is no longer there. And where that becomes important, when you go for mortgages and stuff, having that waiver is sometimes a sketchy thing for banks.
Yeah. Um, so, so it's, I think I'm hearing um that getting class six approval is probably not something we're gonna be able to get.
We haven't done it since I've been on the board, and I think that we've kind of, I had two applicants prior to you come in, and we've really um kept them to that town standards. Um, we did two previous, believe you have a copy of, oh, here they are. We have a policy that we have not accepted from our town attorney. Um regarding construction on class six roads and private roads, which we were.
You were going to talk to them.
We were scheduled, we were scheduled to um talk about prior to you coming in.
Yeah.
You have these in yours.
Yep.
Um, these two are the guidelines we made for each of the previous. This was the one for Everett, the recent one, and this was the one down on Guinea Road, even though it doesn't say it was just stated for class six roads. So if you read through those requirements, the requirements, if you go through them, they're not that extensive, cause just to get down that road.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's twelve inches of crushed gravel there, and then there's six inches of um the other material on top of that.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna have the proper drainage on the side of the road.
Right.
But I think they're pretty minimal for going down uh those slopes that you have there.
Would, would there be a possibility of us doing this up to the class five standard, but having the turnaround here at the top of the lot?
Now, I noticed on this regulation, when I read it, did not say where the turnaround was to be. It said, uh actually, I think on this one, it did say the driveway or the, let me read it one more time.
I know, and it says whichever is is further.
Yeah, the roadway shall be constructed to the above standard minimum just of two hundred and fifty foot frontage per lot. Or to the driveway, whichever is further. So, we have had turnarounds not be all the way at the end of the lot.
Yeah.
Um.
I think what we got into.
Cause I think the end of your lot would be halfway down the hill, which wouldn't make a.
Exactly, it doesn't make a good spot for a turnaround, like there really isn't.
A good spot for a turn.
Not to mention, the slope gets pretty severe there.
Yeah.
And the cost to actually bring it up to town spec.
Well, and then to, and then to make a turnaround, just, there's not a lot of.
And fill it with all of that.
Well, you, you would still have to do the town specs to the end of your lot, but the turnaround, like we just had one that had a hard angle coming back this way.
I know, yeah.
So the turnaround couldn't be at the end of his lot, had to be back far enough to get the, the full radius turnaround.
What you're saying, in order to get a building permit for our lot, we'd have to.
At least do the road to the end of your two hundred and fifty feet.
Past our lot, and that's where we.
Not past your lot, to the, to the door.
Well, I think that basically is, because this is our, our, this is our frontage.
Right here.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not, it's about two fifty, it's pretty much the whole.
Two, two minutes.
Yeah, so your first, you do, they, they have much larger.
Right.
So in these lots, he could do two hundred and fifty feet minimum by the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, so that, I guess the, the thing that's a kicker for us is this, this is where it gets really gnarly.
I think there's four hundred feet of class five, even before you get to your lot, is if you look at this.
Yeah, the part coming down.
I don't think it's quite the part near your mom's house, there's four hundred feet there, and then your front, then your lot begins.
Yeah, yeah. Right. And, right. Right.
But I'm, I'm gonna let Jeff answer that, but we have had turnarounds that aren't, like, I don't think we would ask you to put the turnaround on that slope.
And, and, and that's great, we're just, we were just hoping to not have to bring that whole slope up to class five, because that, that gets into.
Unfortunately, if you didn't, then the other people would be left with a hardship.
Right, and like when we talked to Steve about it, we were like, okay, so we would do the first part, we'd have to do the culvert and all that expense for the first part. Ahead of time, and we would cover that, and then he would do his part for his, when he was ready to build his lot, so that we would be able to share the cost, basically.
Right. Um, I don't know if there's any chance you'd speak to him earlier about sharing the cost quicker, cause for us to, to get that to a pool, it will have to be done to the end of year law. Only cause not only is it on our new regulation, but it was actually done on the plan back when it was approved, so.
Yeah, okay.
I'm, I'm only speaking for myself.
No, I think I, I'm wrong. Yeah, and the, and another issue is those lots could be sold, and then the, any agreement you had, was, was it a handshake, was it a legal agreement?
Right.
If that lot sold to someone else, basically, we're just putting a hand hamstring in the next owner of that lot.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess, I guess I just feel a little hamstrung by, by our situation, cause we have to fix the other part up to our lot as it is now.
And that's, that's been um, uh, the, almost the precedent, uh Guinea Road, for example, we had a gentleman who had a lot of record. And he wanted to build on it, but there was all class six road, and he realized that he had, he couldn't afford it, so we never really pursued it.
Right.
But the class six road was a requirement for it to uh to be.
So in other words, he had to do some road that didn't have frontage for himself as well.
Right.
Like you said, you're doing the four hundred feet.
Right.
And they're gonna benefit from it.
Right.
If it were, if it were me, I would try and meet with the people and come up with an agreement that you could provide in advance, you know?
But still, there's no guarantee he's gonna do anything for you, your, your, your matter.
But he may, he may be willing to, to share some of the costs now, even though he might not use it for a period of time.
Yeah. Cause looking at that, that's gonna be probably a hundred and fifty.
And Jeff, you're doing a section of the uh now in town, I think, right? Down on that.
He hasn't started yet.
But you have, you have rough costs on it.
Yeah, it's a lot different than this one.
Yeah.
Similar situation.
Yeah.
That's a subdivision, but the planning board has learned, so they don't, the town doesn't get themselves in these situations anymore. Before the road subdivision can be uh recorded, they have to do all the road improvements and get it up to that class five part. Before the sign, back when the town subdivided this, they were a little more lenient, and they did it kinda as it turns out backwards, you know?
But they put surprisingly good notes on here, I thought, for, for the time this was subdivided.
Thirty years ago, yeah.
Pretty detailed.
And as far as their turnaround, at the end of their property, there's a wet area and a culvert, doesn't go onto the road there anywhere. So you couldn't build a turnaround at the end of their property anyway.
Right.
So that, that just wouldn't work.
Right.
And personally, I, I don't see, it's a temporary turnaround, and if they can use their driveway for an adequate turnaround, I don't, wouldn't see any problem with that. But I do think, but I do think they should make the improvement to the end of their frontage. And then whatever happens down the street, whether that guy builds one house, two houses, sells the property, or whatever, if somebody wants to do it again, they have to take it from that point if they do it.
I'm very familiar with the land down there, as Bill knows, but I, I, I don't really know where that two hundred and fifty feet is.
Yeah, there, there, there was a lot of uh erosion, um.
Yeah, in the center of that road.
Yeah, and, and not on that first section that you can see on the pictures that we have, that one looks great.
Yeah, the down side of the, 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 yeah, I remember that.
But down below that, it was just a gully.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, uh, I don't know, it happened.
Yeah.
I don't know, several years ago.
Yeah, during the big flood, whatever it was, forty two.
But then, but then even after, and then I think a- at the time that the road above got paved, then that water just ripped down there even faster. And, you know, it already had, there was already a path for it, so it just, you know, water finds its way, and it just.
Yeah.
Go wider and wider, so, so that section that's on the frontage of our lot is the, is the, probably the worst of it.
The worst part, it is the worst part.
It's the worst of all of it, like, once you get down to his lot, it flattens out.
So that turnaround, uh where you turn into the field kind of there, appears to be your lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, is that where the turnaround would be, is that, is that on your land?
Yeah.
Slightly, slightly beyond that, the turnaround into the field there is just above our, our lot.
Okay, so it'll be, it'll be down a little bit around the top, yeah.
It would be just past.
Just past.
Where the landing is, if it would work.
Yeah, basically, yep.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, where that landing is there, that's where the pin is on that side.
Okay.
And ours is directly across from that, so it would be like, I think on that, the, and it, I'm.
Yeah, on the anti-picture, there's a picture control hole.
Yeah, so like this is, this is that.
Yes.
Other side that you're talking about, and so, right, and so it would be right here, basically, these trees would come out here, and that's where it would be right there.
Here's the curb now.
Which is basically that flat part of the bottom of the.
Yeah.
Of the bottom of the hill. And then, and then you don't see it that well in this picture, but then this just really um draws off, and it's, and it's very deep, this way too.
I know, I know it does.
So as far as being able to bring it up above that grade and then have drainage on the sides, it's just an immense amount of material to bring in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta build the road, you gotta know how to build the road. Trees have to be cut.
Yeah.
Some cutting and filling.
Widen ditch line.
Yeah.
I know that Jeff is doing another section in town for another resident town. What's it off a great find, Jeff?
But I think you're, you've got two different things going on right now. You know, and someone on, on the first is, can they build on the class six road? Or not? If they can't build on the class six road, then the turnaround and the improvements is a separate issue. Right, you, you, you kinda mix them together.
Yeah, so we're saying. No, we're saying that we don't wanna build on the class six road anymore.
Okay, the answer, no, they can't build on the class six road.
Yeah.
That's what you gotta tell them.
And then given, I've given them the legwork we've done on the improvements that.
Oh, they've got all this stuff.
Yeah, and, and I guess.
I meant a couple of times out there, they get the paperwork.
Yes. Jeff, Jeff's seen us a couple of times.
Yeah, no, and, and they asked me last time I was out there about building on a class six road. I said, I could not answer that question.
Yeah.
They would have to come to you guys with a slide out, and we talked about the turnaround, and I said, well, we'd have to talk about that too. And realizing the case that we just talked about with the wet area and all that. So that's what I said. So they can't build on the class six part.
No, I don't think, I think that's, that's the stance this board has taken, and we don't take it on your specific subject, but.
Yeah.
We took several ones back, yeah. It's been that way now for, I think, for at least four years.
And so, it's, we have to be consistent, because if we give, give it to you, then we have egg on our face, because what, what did we do with someone previously, and then what's gonna happen on the next one?
Yeah.
That's the way we set ourselves up, the town sets ourselves up for lawsuits, because we have to be consistent in our decisions.
Dave, can I just remind you that the first uh individual that approached the board on Guinea Road, that's low density, requires. Three hundred feet of frontage, and there was a lot between the end of the maintained road, a full three hundred, because somebody else owned it and refused to. Work with them, and then their lot would start, so it was a tough swallow for them to.
Yeah.
Say, I'm improving the road, and this guy's gonna come in and get a building permit, because he has to upgrade that section.
Which, they're, they're in a similar situation, because they're gonna upgrade the first four hundred feet, and the other guy's gonna get the benefit of the, of engine.
Similar situation, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the four hundred plus the.
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Two fifty, yeah.
But I know that he did approach our board uh not too long ago, maybe a year and a half.
Yeah, and he, he, he's, he had intended to build sooner when he first purchased the land, but has had some other, you know, decisions in his life or whatever, so he's not, now he's, you know, looking at, he's a couple of years.
I think the owner that's living in the house is the first person that approached the board, and that prompted the board.
Moody, Moody too.
To um develop something, so in the event he backed out, then there would be somebody else that would have that same.
I think your numbers are off a little, it's not four hundred feet from the uh entire hill down here, what you brought up.
Yeah, I think it's about three hundred.
Oh, okay, ma'am, sorry.
Yeah, she just looked at town tax.
Well, yeah, she's looking at the frontage of the lot.
Yeah, the lot is four hundred.
No, the driveway for the other, this is part of their frontage, right? At the house lot.
It's probably around three hundred feet.
On the front of the lot line.
Probably the full lot line.
Four hundred and four feet.
That's from this one here.
So it's less.
Five, yeah.
Oh, he's saying.
So it's not four hundred.
Oh, four, four point five is this whole lot.
It's about a hundred.
And it's stopped. It's paved till there.
This is already.
So that's over, over almost a third.
Right, and up here, see that, that dots right there?
Yeah.
And that number.
No, if you read that plan, that's the whole distance.
Of the, trying to check.
From one point to the other.
Of the Moody line.
Four hundred and fourteen.
Of the Moody line.
Yes.
Oh, okay, gotcha, yeah. Yeah, and not, what that is on the road, yeah.
Yeah, some of it's already.
Some of it's already fixed, yeah.
Already fixed, yeah.
So what you're saying is they have to go to the end of their property.
Yes.
Whatever that is, two hundred and fifty foot of their frontage.
Yeah.
And that's the same thing we're recording.
And make an adequate turnaround, but you're willing to let them use their driveway for that turnaround?
Yes.
We.
As long as they make it sufficient size for you.
Yes, and.
The turnaround doesn't have to be at the foot of the hill, cause there's no good spot down the.
And as, and as she said, there's nobody down there.
And it's wet.
Yeah, and nobody, it still has to have the improvement down to that.
Good.
Even with improvement, uh it's gonna have the eight percent slope that the town allows, cause it's as steep as it can possibly be right there?
Ten, I think. A regulation is eight or ten.
Eight.
Which, I mean, I think Everett Road itself is more than eight.
Yeah, the hills is up there, yeah.
Yeah, we have a lot of existing roads in town that are over eight percent.
Feels more than that when you hike up it.
Yes.
Believe it or not, we're looking at uh even driveway regulations now, whereas um it was, um, as a fire department chief said, we're the wild, wild west when it came to driveways.
Oh, yeah.
We're one of the only communities in town which does not have driveway regulations for safety reasons. And getting a fire truck up, up somebody steeply, if you just on mansion, I mean, just going down thirteen, you see some of those driveways, they're just like vertical. Um, it's gonna, we're gonna tighten up on that for safety reasons.
Yeah.
So, it, it, it's tough, because you can't grandfather in, but going forward, there's a number of great lots in town dwindling. The number of challenging lots are still out there, and those challenging lots have to meet minimum safety requirements, and that's a, that's a challenge.
Would there be any possibility of us um bringing up to five? Uh, and with the turnaround at the top of the lot, with a timetable of doing the rest of the part below? We're just thinking financially, in order to be able to bring that road up and to build. Um, you know, could we, could we begin the improvements on that section that's in front of our lea-? I mean, we're not gonna go down there, there's not gonna be any need for anyone to go down there.
For at least two years.
For at least two years, until he wants to build on his.
The um, but the problem with that is financially, are you gonna be in the position when he's ready to do that? You know what I mean? So if we say that, if he's ready to build in a year as opposed to two years, just cause he says two years today, may change again, as you stated before that he was planning to build.
Yeah, no, I mean.
You know what I mean, so it's just financially, we want you to be in a position to, to complete your project when he's ready to build as well.
Yeah, and I, I guess it's just, it's a hard pill to swallow to think that I have to fix part of a road that's the most expensive part, that doesn't do anything for, for our property at all.
Uh, the town, I think, has gotten into some situations before, and I don't know them exactly, but if they were to do something, they would probably wanna bond that section of road. And it, and that gets in a whole nother thing where, you know, we do that on subdivisions, but not typically on a residential lot.
Yeah.
But you still have to provide the town with a, some sort of bond, I would think, and then if it didn't get completed that time period, then the town would have the money from the bond to do the work.
Yeah.
Could you do anything like not take over the maintenance of the road till it's complete though? Or is that just make it too complicated?
I, I think you're going.
Cause we would have to accept it anyways, before we could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it would have to, yes, there's, some points already gotta be done.
Yeah.
So they would never come in and accept it.
Yeah, exactly, we couldn't accept it till.
So we wouldn't make him sign that waiver.
Well, yeah.
Until we accepted it, and that waiver would be kind of annulled at that point. Or waiver against emergency services, cause we didn't maintain the roadway. I wish we had better answers for you, but that's uh, unfortunately, we're trying to go by more of the. Try and get the town on the, on the same page with all the rules, regulations, and not have it be different for every applicant coming in and.
Yeah.
And, and the lots are getting challenging, uh because of the number of great lots that are not out there anymore.
There are no good lots, we have to, it's the bony, wet, rough, uh ledgy lots that are left, and yet we're left to deal with them. So, I don't think the bond thing is really gonna help you out, I think that uh.
I think it's just gonna complicate it.
And cost more money, because by the time you've insured for a performance bond, I mean, it still costs money to get that insurance, performance bonds.
How were you intending to upgrade the road, on, on your own or hire out?
Well, we have to hire out for, you know, especially to bring it to, I mean, if we, if we were gonna be allowed to build on a class six, we probably could have, you know, done a lot of it on our own. But if we're bringing it to, up to class five, we're gonna have to hire out for that.
Is class five what the first part of Guinea Road off of?
Yes.
That's class five.
For the section up to that house.
And the town maintains there.
Yeah. Just to that house, and then it turns class six right after on Guinea Road.
The class six town doesn't maintain.
That's right. It's still a town road, you can still pass through it, but it's a class six road, and when the town gives them up or abandons them, has to be done at town meeting. And then the land reverts back to the landowners in the center, but any other still has right to travel to go through to get to their land. So, there are still some people that have rights, but on a class six road, the whole town has the rights to go through it anyway, for the public.
So at this point, it is a class six road?
Yeah. Yeah, and I was surprised to see the subdivision uh, you know, requirements on here, because for the date that was done, they did a pretty good job, I thought.
Yeah.
I thought they did a great job.
Yeah, the thing is, it's, it's protecting all future lot owners. It helps protect all future lot owners from a financial disaster. And the thing is, well, even as the first one, the, your lot's gonna be more sellable, because you're gonna have.
But we don't want to sell it, we just want to build on it.
Well, you never know, you never know.
No, I, I do, it's the last piece of Zeller land, it's been his family for a hundred years. And we just wanna put a house on it.
But the thing is, it's uh, it's about safety, having a five, being able to get a fire truck down there.
Yeah, and, and I totally understand that, and I, and that's why we were hoping that the turnaround at the top of the lot, and we wouldn't have to bring the rest of it to class five.
Yeah, that's something, the turnaround at the top is something that we definitely, I think, can work with you on.
Yeah, and that's great, and I do appreciate that very much, with the fact that still have to bring class five for that other two hundred and fifty feet, which is the expensive part, the really expensive part.
Fifty feet, yeah.
Then when I asked the board agent one of those.
So what about on, yeah, yeah, continue.
Being where they're redoing this section of, you've been down, or I've been down there, we know that it's all washed out, and they bring that up to the class five standards by filling that in, putting the ditchways. But the slope beyond their lot. You know. They don't have enough room to take the.
Right.
To get the ten percent slope, there's still something.
Great, unless we wanna leave a cliff on the.
You know, you either have to dig it down at the front of their lot, or extend past their lot to get rid of the. The um. Ten percent slope. Or eight percent.
Well, they're not gonna end it at like a cliff at the end of your lot, it's gotta slope into the under the road somehow.
Right, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's not a long distance to do that for the amount of.
Yeah, cause their lot, I'm pretty sure it's gonna end right at the foot of the hill, and they.
There used to be a knoll there, but when a guy went in and logged, he took all that dirt and pulled it in and made a log landing on. It's a lot different now than it was before, since the logger logged the adjacent property.
Yeah.
Plus, it's a lot more visible, you can see exactly where their property line ends, cause.
Yeah, cause the the trees start there.
Their property line ends, ends the clear cut.
Oh, okay.
For.
Yeah.
Oh, I haven't been down in a while.
Yeah, he cut, he cut.
Took a boat.
A lot.
So really hard.
Yeah.
Tons and tons and tons.
Yeah.
Oh, I haven't been down there in a while, yes.
Well, I guess the deal was, the owner wanted a three acre section cut out for his house site, future house site, and then his father's lot, they did something similar to that, I guess. And it's, I I don't know, cause I haven't seen any layout of it.
Is it huge amount of wood down those two lots?
Oh, yeah, there is. Yes, there is.
Do they do that in the winter, hopefully?
No, just the company, we see that.
Yeah, they just.
Believe me, I can hear them down the street.
Well, anyway.
Yeah.
That's, that's all right. But they're, the town. Has an easement right. If you're looking to the west. Go, I think it's nine feet. I can't remember it, I don't have the plane with me, because the people at Tucker Hill when they subdivided that. Gave the town a strip of land. In case this road was ever running, it goes the whole length of that subdivision.
Okay.
And how far down is that subdivision goes up, like? Like as far as down the road, you know what I mean?
I I don't know how far that lot is.
Yeah.
That lot goes all the way down, almost even at the end of the original property, they're almost the same.
The seventeen, that full?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
I didn't know they owned all of that on that.
It's the road that goes to the log home that's down off of Mansion Road there.
Yeah.
And that's on their lot, I think. The town forest owns a section.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was created to the.
That first, the first lot on Tucker Hill, along the right, owns a certain distance, I don't know what that is. And then the town forest owns a section.
Yeah.
And then it goes to the property.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't know that dimension.
There is a, there is down there. Thomas. Yeah. Yeah. It has all the mentions that you guys walked there.
So this would be the first.
See the notch in the.
Yeah.
Lot line.
This is the first lot. Which is the house that's here, and then this is the.
Yeah, so the first lot line, and then you see the notch for that extra ninety feet.
So there's a house over here, it's on the hill, and he has, it's.
What it is.
All the way there.
This part.
Yeah, that's the town forest owns it now, but came out of that.
Yeah.
Where do you see the notch?
Right here, at the very end of the.
At the second lot line, the very end of the paper, right here.
Is it this line here and this thing here?
Yeah.
Yeah, see the notch right here? And so this is town forest, and this is that house that's over here.
That road is almost down to the end.
Yeah, yeah.
It was the end of that property, regional, structural subdivision.
I can send you a copy of the page section that shows there.
Okay. Yeah, that's great, cause I have the like original maps, but they don't have that updated, you know, there's different ownership on that of the road, and that subdivision wasn't there and all that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just a copy of our town tax.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And they give you a big copy of that too.
Yeah, the tax, the plan itself would be better to look at, cause they'll have all the.
Yeah, I I have um. This thing, the original.
Tucker Hill subdivision.
This original thing that when it was subdivided, but I don't feel like, it doesn't have, it doesn't have that stuff on the other side, you know, like that notch out with where the owner put it and stuff.
So what are you gonna ask Chris about?
I know, I was gonna ask um about the Guinea Road, is it developed up to two hundred and fifty feet beyond? The start of their property?
They didn't do it, they 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 backed out.
They 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 wanted to do the some, to do the upgrade of the road.
So they're not building?
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Least at this time.
There are other houses on Guinea Road, are there, right?
Yeah, one on this end.
And is that house?
It's on a class five section of road, and they accepted that section of road way before we had um. Road standards, I guess, they didn't, the, it's class five, but does not look like a class five road if you go down there.
Yeah, cause you've been down.
It's very narrow.
Cause I was looking at it, and it definitely doesn't meet town standard at all.
Nope. But we do plow that and turn around, and they've done it for so many years now, they're not gonna go backwards on the owners of the lot there and.
Right.
Say we're not gonna do it.
There hasn't been a subdivision, that's on the books from on there, and before he can get any building permits in there, he has to do the upgrade.
Oh, it's the same as yours, that's right, you are correct.
Guy by name Lyman owns it.
Lyman owns like, created like.
Five or six houses.
Yes.
Several lots on both sides, but he, his requirement is gonna have to upgrade it all.
Several lots.
Yeah.
This probably was maybe the same timeframe.
Oh.
I can't remember. It was a long time ago.
Yeah.
Thirty year type of. So that's on the books as well.
Yeah, Lyman.
Um. Yeah, the only thing we. You know, grading that road at the end, and a feather back it, I've not been down there, let you write.
It'll have to get matched in somehow, yes.
It'll have to get matched in somehow, which could be beyond their lot.
Yeah. But, I mean. It doesn't have to stop exactly right at their lot, they can come up a little and. Grade it down to their road, and then when the next person comes, he can match into what they've done and take it from there.
Which just needs to be a little further.
Hmm?
Just needs to be.
No, he's saying that at the end of.
No way around.
We can grade it down, so as to not leave a cliff there, but not go beyond the two fifty.
Oh, I see, I see. I see. But not go beyond.
Beyond your property.
Yeah, and he starts off, he might have to start higher than.
He'll have to build up to a grade to continue.
Two bit. Yeah.
To get the eight percent goes.
It'll look like that, understood, yeah.
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 So it'll be built.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're gonna rely on Jeff, you know, when you guys build that to, you know, say it's okay or.
Well.
Yeah.
His contract, I could have Jeff maybe consult, have your contractor consult legally.
We would.
Well, I told them that they should have a, we should have a a public meeting before anything stops down there, to go over the parameters and invite the neighbors. So the neighbors know what's going on, the butters, the director butters, we could come up with, I, obviously, I don't think we're gonna get that now, and listen to the discussion, like a timeline. But I guess it's gonna be a work in progress.
Yeah, we're gonna have to figure out, because it's a, you know, it's gonna be a bigger cost than we're hoping.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a bit of a work in progress, but I still think, oh, I have that meeting at the selectmen's office with the butters and all that, so there's no.
Yeah.
No, I didn't know this was gonna happen.
Right, as far as trees that need to come down and that, yeah.
Yeah, and all that, so everybody knows.
Yeah, it's like, we didn't even know when he was cutting the trees down, I mean, I knew he had been cleaning the trees, but my dad called me, and he's like, there's a huge rig down here taking trees out, and I was like.
Which, the the guy does have the right to log his.
Yeah, absolutely, I just, you know, was like, tiny blocks.
He was after me about cutting the trees on the road, and I told him no, not to cut the trees on the road till the road situation was straightened out, that would be a separate, that'll be someone else's deal to worry about that. Just enough so he could access it with his equipment, cause there were trees that were bent over those spots. And he, that's all he did, and put a little rock here and there, some wet spots, and move some dirt around, so, but anyway, that was my suggestion that we.
They were able to drive trucks down to load them.
Yeah, huge trucks, double, double, double.
Yes. I gotta go see this.
Yeah, you should.
They wouldn't know.
Couldn't even walk down that road.
Yeah.
I know it.
Yeah, I mean, it, well, dad thought it was improved, he thought it was done.
So they took the slope out of the hill then.
But I was like, no, yeah, three more, s- some, they did take some slope out of the hill.
Okay. All right, um, do you have any other questions for us?
Um, I don't know.
I know it's.
I don't think so.
I know it's probably not the um.
It's not what we were hoping.
Answer you wanted, but.
Unless you make an exception.
Yeah, 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 well, it's.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Maybe they should get answered, what do they have to do to get a building permit?
Now, building permit requirement on here has to be, we have to improve it to the edge of their lot at the two hundred and fifty.
Okay, but then we just, I don't know if they're gonna try to build before they finish the road or.
I don't think we can.
Okay.
Right?
Okay, that's fine, you just, as long as you understand that, that's all.
I feel like. No, I, yeah, no.
Cause I just didn't, I thought it would be too bad if you get that section of that done, and you come and say, hey, listen, we'd like to get a building permit, we wanna get going on our house, but as long as you understand, you gotta have it all done before you can get it.
Yeah, no, we were asking, was there any way that we could, but it sounds like you couldn't.
Okay. That specifically, yeah, that's.
One thing, one thing we'll do for them is, we will let them sign that class six waiver for emergency services.
Before it's accepted.
Yeah. So in other words, if it's not accepted until they do do further down the road, then we can do that also.
I'm sorry, can can just.
We can either accept the road in portions, or we can wait till your neighbor does the road to and accept it all at once.
Okay.
To the town, town.
And so, but if we, i- at the time that we've done it to the bottom of our lot, to the two fifty, right?
Yeah.
Then it's class six, right?
Where's class five at?
We have class five, we don't have to sign a waiver, right?
Correct. As long as we accept it at another meeting, we have to have a public meeting for that.
Public.
It's a whole nother step.
You have to petition.
Okay.
You petition us for a layout of the road, and then we have a public meeting. The town engineer uh will inspect it, make sure it meets the standards with the road agent sp- specified, having p- passes muster, we vote on it.
Then we approve it, and it's done, it goes to registry.
Okay.
It's kind of another process, it's not.
And that all has to happen before the building permit.
Correct.
It.
Before we can even do anything on the road.
Correct.
Yeah. It was simpler when we built our house down there.
Yeah, much later.
Just. Have to be to the, to the driveway.
Yeah. Yeah, and this is, now it says to the driveway or two fifty, whatever's further. Which seems funny, but.
Basically, it's a diaphragmatic.
It says on here, our building permit shall be granted until the roadway is constructed to a gravel surface town standards.
So what is the town standard of six?
So if you could, you could build the road with that waiver and probably get a building permit, but when you've gone through all of that work, you may as well ask for the. You know, you may as well ask for the town to maintain that section of road, because it doesn't prove you to plow at all when you've already upgraded to class five standards.
Yeah, because that, cause I know that doesn't s- specifically say class five standards when you read that part, but that's what that is now, is that?
No. Well, it's, it's got the um blurb in there, the standards, and the standards. Our standards have not changed that large.
Well, they clearly have, because Guinea Road has the outside that doesn't.
It says land, see land subdivision control regulation, so. You're gonna see that those things are gonna have twelve inches of big gravel.
Right, for the stack and six.
Yeah, it's good, it's a fine, it's a good place.
It's gonna hold.
Yeah. I couldn't tell it.
Arguably. Yeah.
Yeah, actually, those specifications that we approved on there is probably what it's gonna be.
And these are for me.
Seven years, I believe.
Yeah. Okay, well, I guess we'll have to kinda.
Yeah, kinda reconsider our options.
Re- re-group and consider our options and. And see what uh, what we can do, so.
And certainly, if you have any more questions, I know you didn't ask us, cause.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Donna could help you with the subdivision regulations, she can uh arrange meetings with your road uh engineer, and then the road agent, and. Whatever. You need.
Already.
Yeah.
Did you uh, do you wanna take this copy with you, cause.
Oh, sure, can I have that, that's an extra, I'll take that, thank you.
And for that matter, we all, if you could have this copy as well.
All right. Thank you for your time, you know, so not not what we were hoping, but.
Yeah. But you don't know, if you don't ask.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, we need to know where we.
Change your mind.
Yeah, change your mind.
Yeah, if you guys don't wanna plow it in the future, we'll.
We're fine with it.
All right, thank you guys.
All right, thank you, good to see you, good to see you, Mr. Oliver.
Good luck.
Have a good trip.
We did.
Good. Nice. Thank you, Lee, all right, thank you.
Okay.
I'll send you that Tucker Hill one.
Oh, I appreciate that, yeah.
Okay. Jeffrey.
Yes, sir.
Well, we have this on the um agenda. Could you um talk with us, Lee, you made a copy, I asked you to make a copy of Jeff with this.
Yeah, was it, which one you have there?
This is this town attorney one. So we've taken two stabs, as you know, at those class six road regulations.
Wow, class six road regulations.
To uh.
Really?
Policy.
I'm afraid it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we took two stabs at it.
Yeah.
Go ahead and give Jeff that copy.
This is from our attorney in March.
And what I'd like to do is have you read this, cause I, today is the first day I saw this, and it pretty much goes through these requirements here, but it does it in a way that if we adopt this policy. To our town road standards, right here, Jeff.
Yeah.
Fill it in on the second page, if you read this, this this spells out to a letter, what we should be doing on class six roads.
For lots of records.
The waiver to sign and everything.
And a checklist, right?
And there's a checklist at the back.
Okay.
So, we were creating this ourselves, trying to do the right thing, but the town attorney sent us this, and it really does spell it all out.
I don't know, after that last subdivision we did and talked with the town attorney, he said it was up to the road, he didn't develop basically this.
Yeah.
Is what he told Donna, told us at the meetings and everything else.
Yeah.
So that's what we did.
And now read this, and it doesn't.
So I haven't, I haven't read this, I don't have any idea what it says.
But now, to me, I understand this more in line to give permission to build on class six.
Without building improvements.
Correct.
No, it tells you to do the improvements, read it. I read this thing. To the letter.
Yeah.
And what it says on that second page, that fills in right here, the standards of a class six and private roads must be brought into compliance with the usual cases are those set out in. Blank adopted by the Dunbarton blank, and amendments here too. So it could either be this policy, or it can be our class five road standards written right in there.
Which is paved roads.
Well, no, class five turn road.
Class five road subdivision standard is a paved road. That's what we tried to do, was separate between that paved and der- design road and.
So, you you could adopt this policy, and we can write that adoption in right here, but it would give us, I'm gonna give time, Jeff, time to read this in the background.
Yeah, I, like I said, this is totally.
When I read this, cover the cover.
Like the other select.
If if it's useful, we should list it back.
Like I said, I, after that last go around we had with um the other end of Guinea Road, it was like.
Right.
Yeah.
And we we we.
Totally, well, unless I misunderstood it, it was a little different twist on it, it almost looks like, when I read this quick, he took some of that information we had, and just formatted it into this letter.
Yeah, but this looks like it's a, you know, it's under the RSA, I think it's a generic thing that he found after the fact.
Yeah, maybe, I don't.
He never provided this to us before that I know of.
Oh, I I've never seen it.
And I read this from cover to cover today, and it fits every. You know, it says a statement purpose, it has everything, partial list of factors, the application, the improvements.
Well, I mean, we just talked about a couple items here, and the number A, on number four A says, a written letter. Right?
Most perceived in written or.
From the select.
From the select.
Yeah.
And that's right before the work begins.
Yeah, that's what I was, I got trying to get across to them, that we had to have a public meeting.
Yes.
So everybody was on the same.
This thing spells it.
Read it.
Yeah, I had to read this, Jeff, it spells it out so good, that I think that we could use it. You know, we were trying to create a policy, but this covers everything in it, you know.
Well, this thi- this is the more detail too, we can include some of that inside.
No, what you're like.
As far as I'm concerned, his his gravel requirements and stuff are wrong.
Where are they here?
Sixteen feet, two foot shoulders, four inches of crushed gravel.
I am not seeing such.
Four inches, finished with four inches of crushed gravel. I mean, so it doesn't really.
But to me, I understand this to be.
I was gonna say, there's a policy to issuing building permits on class six or private roads.
On class six. Which is what Holly was trying to.
Not a class five town maintain.
Five. Correct.
So I am not connecting the dots, but.
Well, we're taking a class six road and we're upgrading to a class five.
Yes, and I and I specifically asked that question, you're not gonna let her build on a class six road, that's why, cause that's why I said it was two different questions I asked you.
We never have before.
And you said, hmm, well, I don't, you didn't vote on it, but you said, no, you weren't gonna do it.
Well, and the thing is, we're not gonna usurp.
Yeah, and that's fine.
No, we we, I think it's, I think it's poor form to usurp the authority of the planning board, planning board said it has to be brought up.
Well, there was a requirement on the subdivision.
Exactly. And the thing, you usurp the the authority of the planning board, then why we have a planning board?
I don't know what the letter from her neighbor. Said, she said it was a letter.
Well, she just said he's gonna build in two years, maybe.
Yeah, and, you know, he could sell lots, he could build.
That's, that's always unknown.
I mean, and the other thing is, all the stuff was a known entity when the subdivision was done thirty years ago, and it was, and right, and everybody, they're all part of the family.
One thing I would like to ask our town attorney direct, like Jeff just said. This is the policy regarding the class six and private roads.
Yeah. It's weighing a building permit on it.
Well, it's a policy, it doesn't.
Right, he's saying if we decide to adopt it.
Yeah. Um. Is it our choice as select board to say no, or will they have a leg in court to stand on if they wanted to go?
That would be the question, wouldn't it?
That's uh.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what I wanna know, Lee.
Cause the town's not gonna maintain it.
Right. Until it's a class five road, yes.
And then if we've gotta do it, and that's.
Would you say, can I just clarify, is it a choice to say no or permit without upgrading, without?
No, and say nothing while upgrading. I just wanna know, we said no.
Yeah.
To the people coming in front of us tonight, that. To the people coming in front of us tonight, that we would not allow them to build on a class six road without upgrading to a class five road. Is it legal for us to say no altogether, or do we have to provide them a policy like this that gives them an option?
Yeah.
The problem, problem with tonight's example, you can't use that, cause that's a subdivision.
Right.
That, that's a poor example, if you took a lot of existing, existing.
This would be the crookers.
Yes.
Right.
This would be a, a good template for perhaps a crookers.
Right, because it was for zoning.
But then, but again, but again, they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna make it class six maintain it themselves, they wanted it down.
Yeah, they did, and that's what they asked for. But these people are saying they.
Well, they didn't wanna take man, uh, handle it, and the only way for.
But these people are saying they would maintain it.
Yes, but again, it's going against the subdivision.
It is going against the subdivision, that was, like Jeff said, spelled out.
That was a check. Yeah. I think he did the right thing for the subdivision requirement.
Right. And I, I, I will give it to him, from that far back, I'm surprised it's spelled out as well as it is.
I thought they did a great job by putting that information in there. There's quite a bit to this, I'm just reading the highlights, but, you know, you gotta guarantee a future maintenance, gotta set up an associate, there's a lot more to this than just. See, this, this would be for those people, such as the crookers, who didn't wanna, wanna maintain the road.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'll read it all, but I, I think, I think we're talking a little too separate things.
Yeah.
We, we are, and then, and then.
But I think that's a good question, asking, if you say no, what are the ramifications of saying that?
And then, like you said, from what our town attorney said, we, we kinda developed this policy, helping you out or whoever.
Yeah.
But it's really your policy this way.
Yes, but mine mirrors that.
Well, we should, we should have you put your heading at it and say, this is the road agent's policy.
But that was a little different, that was a subdivision.
Right.
With the intent to be taken over as a class five road.
We're talking the what, the?
The newest Guinea Road.
Yeah.
Well, the newest, yes.
Yeah. But I'm talking all the other ones that aren't like that.
Yes. Yeah.
We should put a proper heading on it.
Yeah.
And then we wanna be careful for whether there are lots of record or lots that were subdivided prior.
Well, shouldn't it?
Cause they're, they're all lots of record at that point, but they have subdivision notes like that one had.
Well, a lot of these are lots of record prior to zoning.
Right.
Which is nineteen seventy.
Which is crookers.
Yes.
Where this one actually has notes on it, so. We should have a policy from our road agent.
For those, for those, they're, I agree, but for those individual lots, lots of record, if they wanna maintain the road, they have an option.
And I, I think with that policy.
Yeah, but.
Okay. With the policy in place.
But do we, do we have, the question Dave was asking, Dave, if I could rephrase it. Dave was, wants to make sure the law, can we say no to everyone, or say yes, correct?
I don't think you can say no to a lot of record.
Even if they sign the waiver?
Yeah.
They would have to sign the waiver.
They'd have to sign the waiver.
They would have to sign a waiver, it gets recorded through the registry.
Cause that's Dave's question.
We have a few unstated law.
And they want on Rainway Road, that's.
Yeah.
Yes, and we have some unstated road.
Well, there are all kinds, but they're older ones, Jeff.
Yeah.
We didn't have, that's why I'm thinking.
They have lots of record.
We need the policy in place from Jeff, otherwise we won't have a leg to stand on.
It's really not my policy, cause it's got nothing to do with her.
It is.
That's, these.
It's not, it's basically.
The town attorney said it has to come from the road agent.
Yeah.
And that what says in here?
No, this is.
That what says in here?
This is something different, building permit on a class six and private.
Well, that's what we just said, we just said you want a policy from here.
So we have, an example is private road down the street, right after Mantra Road on the right.
Morse.
Morse's, and it's a mo- more, more, and it's built to ro-.
Not Morse, more.
Yeah, that's a private road is built to the town standard, Jeff.
A nice and private. But if they came in and said we wanted, oh, I guess if they did a subdivision.
They did a subdivision.
They could, they could, to me, ask that to be a town road, they haven't, but they could.
That was a required.
Yeah.
Petition the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what it says in here. So, alright, read that little word, Jeff, and come back to us with the policy that you're saying this is what we want.
Alright, I'll read the problem. So you want me to make a policy for the class six roads to?
Yes.
Which one looks good? Somebody could come back and petition the town to take it over, that's what it should be. Not substandard gravel conditions and stuff like this spelled out. That's why I don't understand where he got this information, if it's generic or.
We should ask him, cause I.
It's pretty specific.
Yeah, it is specific. Can you ask him on the road withs and stuff that are in this policy that he sent us?
Is there some law?
Where they came from? And what I'm thinking, Jeff, is I think that their minimum standards for that RSA that's called out in here.
Yeah, maybe. But the, the thing is, we can, we can be more strict.
I made Lean give me a copy of that RSA too.
It's, do you know that?
Can you give Jeff a copy of that, Lean?
Or is that the excavation in driveways?
No.
It's the RSA that, that does say excavation.
Alright, well, whatever.
It's RSA two thirty-six colon one, zero maybe?
One four. One four six thirteen.
I'm under the impression, just what I'm gonna say, if there's a potential that someone could take a private road, petition the town to take it over, it should be built to that standard, not a substandard, you know what I mean?
Totally agree.
If they're it, if that really exists. There's no reason why the town, the to- the state cannot be, the town can be more strict than the state.
Yes.
And for safety reasons, you have great standards.
Yeah, this just kinda confuses everything. And remember this, he did give us this, um, insert the town letterhead here, he did give us this acknowledgement of limits of municipal.
That came with this on the same evening.
Did Jeff have a copy of this?
No.
There you go now, Jeff.
I get yours. Okay. See, if they came in tonight, and it was a lot of record, not due to a subdivision, a little subdivision land, they could apply for a waiver and all that kinda stuff and bill.
Correct.
But in this case.
It would be a private way.
Private way, in this case, it's, it's a subdivision, it's gotta go by the subdivision as approved by the planning board, and recorded.
I guess it would be class six, but.
That piece of land was subdivided several different times.
Really?
Where Janet used to live, came out of another parcel, house over here came out of a parcel, most of the lots came out of a parcel. The one after that, that goes down to Mantra Road was all part of it.
All part of it?
It's quite a bracket of subdivision.
Is the part that Dan's bought part of that as well?
No.
Okay. Going on to the next item we have on our agenda tonight, roadway regulations. Uh, the planning board has given us a recommended roadway.
Driveway?
It's driveway.
Driveway.
There was some question on whether we could adopt that as town board's selectmen or perhaps going to voters. I think Lean and I have looked at the regulations and the board of selectmen do have the authority to do that now. We have a draft here that Donna gave us. And we have another, um, draft that Mike has gone over and reviewed with Donna.
Correct.
And we also have a copy of that, um, RSA two thirty-six thirteen that references driveways and other accesses on public ways, which is referencing a lot of these different towns. I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna go through these regulations and see some of what I saw in here that was important from the other town.
We don't need to see this again, do you, Jeff?
You guys both have Mike's copy and Donna's copy in front of you.
This is the one the planning board approved.
Yeah.
And this is the one Mike made, just reformatted it.
So, the first thing I noted up here on the top of, of Donna's, was there was no fee for that, listed at all.
No fee?
No fee.
Okay.
So I put a note down, I'll give you these highlighted ones.
Okay.
And, and Donna's first copy, it said the road agent shall prescribe the application, and then in Mike's, it just says agent.
Oh, no, it, no, it says the road agent, he just spiced it up from.
Oh, it's a little messy.
I, it was, it was reformatted by.
Okay. I didn't even notice that, yeah, okay. So anyway, that's, um.
It's really no change, I didn't make any changes there.
Okay.
He was just trying to confuse you.
Before I get into any of the other things that I think are, I'm gonna read you some highlighted sections from the different towns. And I'm gonna read these, and then we'll go through this line by line and talk about what's. I read all of the abutting towns that Donna gave me, and I looked at pertinent information to this. We have a note on ours that says driveways should intersect the street at ninety degrees, and that's point blank, the end of it. And in most of these towns I've seen, like this is the town of Bow. Hold on here. The driveway shall connect to the street at a right angle if possible. However, in no case shall the driveway intersect the street at less than sixty degree angle. And I think this gives some allowance when Jeff's out there in the field, um, with the owner of the property, trying to give him a driveway permanent look at that, and say, okay, cause of wetlands, I need to come in at a slight angle to the street.
Okay.
Um, so I like that whole sentence in here.
Driveways, well, can we, driveway should intersect at ninety degrees, what's a, what's the second sentence you had?
Well, I'll, I'll give it to her, so you don't have to write it all, okay?
Alright, good, alright.
The driveway shall connect to the street at a right angle if possible, I like that if possible. However, in no case shall the driveway intersect the street at less than sixty degree angle.
I think, just put that for number seven.
And that's, that's in, all of these towns have that same wording. And what I wanted to do is, it's not so hard cut like that. I'll go on some other notes here from this town here, this is the town of Bow. And this one here, I think is, should be important to us as well. Um, item number ten on ours. It says, I, I'm gonna go on Mike's because the numbers have been messed up.
Okay.
The maximum allowable grade for a driveway is ten percent, doesn't say or anything else. All the other regulations I found is driveways with a grade in excess of ten percent. For driveways with a grade in excess of ten percent, a twenty foot long flat platform with a maximum grade of two percent approaching, the street is required. So there is some give and take when Jeff is out there in the field and he sees a driveway that can't meet it, as long as they have that approach um, to the roadway, it gives him again some more, and I see that in most of the other towns.
I, I can go with that. David, should go through that, I'm, I'm making notes on, on here.
Yep, so that's, um.
Number ten, changed.
Number ten, and I'm just putting notes here.
Okay. That's good.
Alright. And I highlighted. There's another one here that I noticed we didn't have, and I think it's important. The driveway construction shall be completed before issuance of certificate of occupancy. I think that should be a number.
That's a safety concern, is it not?
It should be one of these numbers, but we don't have it listed, number twenty maybe?
Twenty.
Is it?
Before CO?
Driveway completed before CO.
I, I'm gonna give you this, so it says right here, the driveway construction shall be completed before issuance of certificate of occupancy.
That's, that's a safety issue, and I agree with that, yeah, that should be.
It's done anyway, we do it now, but.
They just submit it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's, I, that's good.
On this town, we have edges of driveway should be placed a minimum fifteen feet from property line. This town here, town of Bow, which is pretty restrictive, driveway should be placed a minimum ten feet from property line.
I've seen one that's five feet, I've seen so many that are small.
I've seen five and another ten, so I, I averaged and went to ten. I don't know.
What do you think, Jeff, as really? We've had a case of, uh, when constructing the driveways down in the newest subdivision, you know, at the golf course, burying the boundary markers with the fill from the driveway, cause they put the driveway so close to the property line, and they would make a slope on the fill and cover the boundaries over.
Yeah.
And then they were required to reset the boundaries before they got their occupancy. So we just thought, plus, not everybody gets along, they push a little snow over there, you push a snow on my property, you can eat ten feet up pretty quick. We got three hundred foot of frontage.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say, I guess, I would be okay with as long as at the end of this, we give you the leeway to say we're wetlands and whatever else it makes sense, you know? That's the biggest thing.
Everybody's got hardship, believe me, when you go out and give people a driveway permits, everybody's got hardship. I, I, I don't, fifteen feet is not, it's not a lot of feet, you know, it's kinda small. I think fifteen feet's fine.
You wanna leave fifteen, okay. Circle of fifteen, cross over by ten.
Okay. I saw five feet, I thought that was ridiculous.
I saw five and I saw ten on two other towns, so.
Yeah.
The last thing I have here, and we don't have anything on here, and this is listed at the back of, at the end of, um, it's listed as waivers and appeals, says upon a written request, the public works director, we're gonna have road agent instead of that. I'm just gonna make a note, road agent.
Okay.
Has the authority to waive or modify the provisions of this chapter except for those required by the RSA two thirty-six thirteen as amended, or those related to planning conditions of approval, which we just had perfect, uh, earlier tonight, we had the planning board approval. The written request for waivers shall provide written justification and documentation for all waivers. For such waivers and modifications approved by the road agent.
Jeff, what that does is give you the authority to make the, except, in other words, on the, in the field exception, if, where you find a problem, you can't adhere to the regulation, gives you authority to make the exception.
Let me, let me just finish this up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Shall be provided the decision in writing and shall include justification, documentation. All appeals of any action of the road agent pertaining to driveways, these regulations shall be made in writing to the planning board, which shall issue written decision within six days. I'm thinking instead of planning board, it should be the zoning board, but we could leave it that way.
The planning board's in charge of driveways.
They are, so.
And I am the designee of the planning board. Does, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
And, yeah, the planning board.
So that's listed on the, that just gives you some options, Jeff, that somebody can put something in writing and propose it to you, if you're in agreement to it, you go and fight for them or fight against them, whatever you wanna do.
I like that, I like that, in other words, it gives a, it's not so closed ended, if there's accept, there's always exceptions.
I'll call this twenty-one.
Yeah, I got a twenty-one, I have a twenty-one, it's good.
Okay, that's the town of Bow, which I kinda went, let me just read these other towns, see if there's anything else. Hoppington also has a waiver. I'll read what I highlighted from Hoppington. Driveways shall be placed no closer than forty feet to an intersection. Hoppington was the only town I found less than fifty feet, we have fifty. If I remember right.
Fifty feet, number thirteen.
What do you guys prefer, fifty or forty?
Your numbers are different numbers. Jeff, any, any comment there? I don't see what's wrong with fifty, but do you wanna make it four? No, I don't, I, I think fifty's fine. We have nothing right now.
And this is just our discussion, so.
We have nothing right now.
Right.
So, it doesn't, we had to come up with a distance, so we use fifty. I, I, I think fifty, as a starting point, fifty's fine, if this, and we have ability to.
There's always that exception. Yeah.
There's always that exception.
Yeah, if you challenge a large piece of ledge and they can only get forty feet, you can say, alright. That's not gonna obstruct your sight distance, but we'll cut you some stock, you can get around.
Yeah, you have number twenty.
You can knock it down so you can get the sight distance, but you don't have to knock it down four feet.
You have the ability to do that by us putting the last paragraph.
Yeah, agreed, I say keep it fifty for now.
Okay, I wanna read this other one here, keep it moving. The driveways with a grade in excess of ten percent. A twenty foot long flat area approaching the street is required. I like that one because it's simple. I put down, uh, the town of Bow's, I, I put down this, uh. Let me read to the town of Bow's, okay? For driveways with a grade in excess of ten percent, a twenty foot long flat platform with a maximum grade of two percent approaching the street is required.
I like how that's, I love the Bow's.
Leave the Bow one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two percent, you understand what the Bow's saying?
It's on a give standard that it can't be over two percent.
Yep.
Because flat, someone's flat is. Right.
Okay.
No, we, we, you, you already hashed us over, correct, pretty much?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll leave it the way they presented it.
Oh, we're leaving the town of Bow.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So that says if it's over ten percent?
Yes.
What does that do with, with ten percent going off that way, how does that help you? What does that, do they help you?
Every.
Can you respond to skid on?
Slide before.
That helps you if you're approaching the road at a ten percent grade.
Yep.
And coming up to the road, you should have a flat spot, we may. Bought a pipe to go on Grapevine Road on those lots, so the cars can stop on a flat area and you're going. But if you've got a ten percent grade, you come off your road level and then you go up ten percent. The problem is still the ten percent.
Yep, I agree with you.
You know what I mean?
Every town, every town has.
Yeah, but I mean, that's. It's a, I don't quite get how that helps you on a uphill thing. You just don't slide into the road and.
Backwards into the road.
They don't care if you slide on your own property, they don't.
General, I think so. I'm kinda under that impression myself, I just don't want the fire truck to slide down or the ambulance.
This one here, um, this is a town of.
Well, we already have, we already have, it has to be two percent sloped away from the road.
Yeah, exactly.
Just that's like eight feet, so it's like.
Minimum eight feet.
It's kinda, we're kinda jumbling two together.
No, we're not, it's a lot longer than eight feet.
Number nine. Yeah, like I said.
Well, plus at least this one says two percent, that one says two percent. So like he's saying, scenario where you're coming up to the road, it could be a two percent and then down.
Okay. There's something I, I found interesting in Hopkins, emergency vehicles are generally not able to access driveways that exceed a grade of fifty percent and/or that have curves with an inside radius. Theirs says less than twenty two and a half, I know we did twenty five. So, they did kind of a maximum of fifteen percent on theirs, which. Was interesting to read, that was the only town I found with a.
They, they give you a little leeway, I mean, it says fifteen percent.
Yeah. The driveway shall connect street at right angle if possible. However, in no case shall the driveway intersect the street less than sixty degrees.
We have that one for number seven.
Hopington was the five foot property line one. In their waiver, I'll read their waiver, instead of public works, um. The road agent has the authority to waive or modify the provisions of this chapter. Except for those required by RSA thirty six thirteen as amended. The road agent shall provide written justification and documentation for all waivers granted. All appeals of any action of the road agent pertaining to driveways and these regulations will be made in writing to the planning board. This is a little simpler than what Bow had had, but it's pretty much the same wording.
You wanna use the Hopkinton language, I don't, I like simple.
It is simpler, what are your thoughts?
Okay, I put twenty one, I, 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 Hopkinton language.
Twenty one.
Hopkinton. So what are we gonna do for the max grade allowable, if we're gonna, if we do that provision for over ten percent?
Let me just mark this as, uh.
In other words, the choice will be the ten or fifteen, correct?
Well, if we're putting that provision for ten percent, we have to have a maximum.
Yeah.
There has to be a point to say, okay, over ten, what's the max? That's the point.
Well, the maximum allowable grade for driveways, ten percent, if we go fifteen percent.
But we just put a revision saying that we have to have a two percent.
Correct.
Platform, if it's over ten percent.
With a maximum fifteen percent right after that's.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Let me just, um.
I, I wanna get some better expertise, that's acceptable?
I'm gonna tell you this, that's the same thing I'm saying. Quite frankly, I don't care. If I'm gonna build my driveway, I'm gonna build my driveway a certain way. These people out there, builders, building driveways now, they'll do whatever works for them and then the poor homeowners stuck with it. My biggest concern is the fire department, because they have to respond. They don't have, I, Jeff Grozny, the road agent can say, I don't have to go up that driveway.
Right.
But the fire department risking their vehicles, which are very expensive.
Right, right, right.
I think we oughta really take that into consideration.
That's a, that's a section that fire department was under, was fifteen percent was the max for their fire department.
Who's?
Town of Hopkinton.
Why do we have to do with the town of Hopkinton?
We don't, I'm just saying.
No, he's just comparing it.
Yeah, why can't we stick with the town?
With what?
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
I don't think ten percent is reasonable on every driveway in town.
I think it is.
All the rest of these have provisions for it being over ten percent, doing that two.
That two, twenty foot platform doesn't amount to shit on a ten percent grade going up that hill, Dave. That's just.
Why does every town have it in there?
It's for coming up to it for a level platform, so you can access the road, it's got nothing to do with a fire truck going down that driveway, up that driveway. It's at the road.
Can I make a comment now or wait till public?
No, no, you can do one now during this section.
Does it make a difference if the driver's asphalt or gravel? Reason why I say that, last spring we got a call for, uh, for carbon monoxide going off in the house. And we got a call from the police department before we got there, you better bring an all wheel drive truck, because I don't think you guys are gonna make it up the truck, up the driveway. And so we did bring an all wheel drive, we needed it to get up there, and gravel driveways loose. And there was a very, very steep, long driveway, you know, so. If it was asphalt, might be a little different, but, you know. Especially now if you're gonna get an ambulance, you know, you're gonna.
Ten percent, even if, is that, I mean.
Um, every other town has a provision in there of having either the flat spot or fifteen percent.
Of the two towns you've got plenty.
I have four.
How many pages are in there regulations?
Many pages.
How long?
That's what I mean, you gotta, there's a lot of stuff in there.
I've read every single one of them, from top to back.
We got a two page thing and you chastise in the hella, because we're doing the right.
I'm not chastising the hella.
Well, if you can allow, if you can have a special circumstance and allow a fifteen percent, why you call it ten percent? What's the sense, because everybody's gonna have a special circumstance. I can't get ten percent, so I wanna use fifteen.
The circumstances are only for you, nobody else to approve.
Well, they're gonna ask for it, they know what's in there, they're gonna ask for it.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it's gonna be approved though, that's, that's the whole thing, the planning board's gonna be shut down.
They gotta make it work.
Yes, if it's not, by.
And then the other thing is, how are we gonna know it's ten percent?
You're gonna tell us.
Can you look at it, Dave, and tell me it's ten percent?
I'll put my.
Or nine percent or eight percent? If they wanna play that game, they gotta have an engineered plan. And that's what that last thing in there says, the road agent may require an engineered plan.
Right.
And that's what it comes to.
We could, we could put a note in there, any, any, um. Any driveways with grades in excess of ten percent need to be engineered.
Yeah, and, and at the planning board level, not just my level, when they come in for a subdivision.
We still should have a maximum, huh?
Yeah.
I'm good with the engineering, but.
No, no, but, uh, only one put a maximum, all the rest just put that statement about the. Twenty two foot long flat, the other one had a twenty foot long flat. Do you wanna put an actual fifteen in there?
I still think, yeah, fifteen's a pretty excessive grade.
Yeah, I do think so too, but.
I mean, even deliveries, emergency vehicles.
Basically.
Because people want it as skinny as possible, it's going up, it's expensive.
So we'll put with a max of fifteen.
What number is this one gonna be?
Number ten.
Then you're gonna add the engineering part of it?
Yes.
Anything reasonable, anything close to it.
I'm sorry?
You're gonna make it, it's gonna be, like he said, who's gonna say, yeah, it's over ten percent, they're gonna, I mean, get you a survey or.
Yeah, everybody's gonna say, oh, it's not ten percent.
My, my phone says it's only twelve.
Drive, I'm making a note down, bow, driveways. With a grade. Above.
You could even put a grade above sev- uh, seven or percent, so there's a little bit of.
No, we'll do driveways with a grade above ten percent. Require. Engineered plans. Is it some better words than plans?
You said, you said.
Engineered drawings.
Planning drawings, it's the same thing.
Plans.
But we're, we'll, we'll know at the planning board level when they come in based on the grade and that.
Yeah, but we don't even have that in our planning board. We have nothing that, for the planning board either.
But this will be.
Yeah, this will be.
Okay, that's it for Hopkinton, let me just go through where and see. Anything that's stuck out there.
But we'll kinda know like if it's over ten percent at the planning board level, when they come in with the plans, like we did down there.
Yeah.
Cause we were like, wow.
We've been yes to death at ten percent, I don't know if it's ten percent or not, I can't, I wanna drive by it.
Where had, um. Was the only one I found with a thirty foot wide angle where it meets the road, that's a requirement.
Yeah.
Everybody had two hundred feet in all directions.
For a line of sight?
Yeah. This one again had the ninety degrees but less than sixty on the approach to the road.
We have two hundred feet on the line of sight too.
Oh, this one had one thing that I thought we should put in ours. Um, this is, uh. On the pull off section. Uh, number eighteen. The drivers exceeding eight hundred feet length shall be turned out approximately at Mike's. Midpoint of the lane turnouts be reasonably located, slight curve grade minimum of fifty foot long to create travel with allowing two way travel. They have, they had a width of twenty feet stated on theirs, we have no width stated. Do you wanna put twenty or do you wanna leave it? I mean, eighteen you can pass on too, I guess, but. Do you wanna just leave it how it is with no width or do you wanna specify a width? Number eighteen on your.
I think we need, I think we should put some in there, same thing to get.
Jeff, what's your thought, eighteen or twenty feet from passing in that section?
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty.
Cause most likely it's gonna be a big fire truck.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Like it's passing something, it's not gonna, not gonna be a Subaru.
So we'll do twenty.
Get two Subarus next to it.
That's all I have in the town of Ware.
It's gonna be a larger vehicle.
Last one is Gosham. Theirs was a check the box diagrams.
I, I saw that too.
They had ten feet to the property lines, ninety degrees but not less than sixty degrees, very simple there. That's all I put on the Goshams. I didn't get into the other road construction or pitches or grades or drawings. So. Um, other than that. I'm gonna state this as just my view as a board, we can decide what we wanna do with it. But, um. Do we wanna put fees in there somewhere, Jeff, or is that, um, noted some other way by Donna?
Typically, when somebody comes in for a driveway permit, they come in for a building fee and it's built right in with that.
Yeah, there's a fifty dollar fee for a driveway permit.
But, I mean.
I was gonna say, but not always.
We had a, I had an existing one.
No, no, I'm saying you don't always have to get a building permit to get a driveway permit, you can get a driveway permit.
Yes, to get a secondary one or something like that.
So I would, I would put a note down.
I was gonna say, typically, people come in with a driveway permit, we do it.
Yeah, for everything, but, but in the case if they want a driveway permit to access it for logging or something like that, I mean, up to.
You do whatever you want, I mean.
So I put fee in a question mark, if we wanna add that in there, then I think we should state the fee on it.
I don't care, I mean, it's, it doesn't happen that often, it's not that big a deal.
So we just, so if you hand this, here's the driveway regulations, it's got the fee on it.
Well, you sell me something for nothing once in a while.
I, I don't think we should keep a dollar amount, because when we go review the fee schedule.
All our policies can change, right?
Right, but you should just say it's available, the permit fee is available.
Just put there as a fee associated with the driveway permit or something like that.
Permit fee, uh, is required.
Permit fees required.
Just put there as a fee required.
Permit fee required.
Put that in the, in the second section.
I'm just writing at the top and I was rewriting.
What about, what about when it meets the right line, twenty two feet, that's not much. I know mine's way over that, there's a lot of them way over that.
It isn't too much over, that's pretty cool, where you go up by the mail box if you wanna go.
No, even not, not including the mailbox, by the time it flares right to the road, it's probably thirty something feet.
Twenty five.
I thought flaring it instead of having a hole there at the edge of the driveway is better.
That twenty five degree.
Oh, the five foot flare on the rate.
Yeah. That's what that would kinda come in a blank.
Yeah, I was like, why, it's he can swing campers, trailers, anything, but.
Most people, the Subarus.
True.
No, it's, it's. You've built your house.
Yeah.
You did it.
And when I plow, I don't like to plow off the grass, so.
Most of these people, he did it my way.
Players at the bottom?
Yeah.
You, you inspected mine, I had it clear out.
Yeah.
It worked out fine.
The only thing is when you paid, if they didn't pay the right.
What did they do wrong?
They sloped it toward the road, not right.
I fixed that, there's a crack in it, so it goes, the water goes in the crack now.
I'm gonna, um.
But you have nice ditches on each side.
Maintain by main.
You have nice ditch lines down the whole length of the driveway, on each side. And I couldn't give you much to make the water and get it.
So we're not gonna, still, if the changes are, and we really.
We're hashing it out tonight, for a second time, now.
Let's go through it now?
And then we can prove it.
We kinda worry with, she's gonna make the change and give it back to us, but I'm gonna wanna. I'm not done yet though.
Okay, let's keep going.
Now, don't shoot the messenger, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna state this out here tonight and we as a board can decide on it. We have some lengths here. We have a lot of, of lots coming up in the town of Dunbar that are not gonna be part of subdivisions, that are gonna be. There's no good lots left to build on, with a five acre minimum in Dunbar, our driveways typically are longer than our abutting neighbors. And there's nothing in these regulations that really gives them, I looked at all of the abutting towns and these regulations match that.
What are you looking at, the selectmen's policy now?
No.
Okay.
Stick with me, I'm, I'm on the driveway regulations.
Okay.
I haven't moved anywhere.
Okay.
So, item number sixteen says driveways exceeding three hundred feet length should have a turnaround. And be approved by the Dunbar Fire Department, the turnaround, I have no problem with the turnaround shapes or the forty two foot radius. But I think that length should be five hundred feet, not three hundred feet. And my thought behind that is almost every driveway is at least three hundred feet in Dunbar on these lots.
It was a fire department, a re- recommendation.
But I can see three hundred feet right there. And my thought is. There shouldn't have to be a turnaround that large on a three hundred foot driveway.
How are they supposed to get out there after they've driven out three hundred feet, how do they get back on the road?
You gotta back out? Or back in either way?
Half a million dollars a truck, I think people should build a turnaround.
Well, that's why we're discussing it tonight. I think five hundred feet is reasonable, I'll tell you that none of our driveways, um.
I have plenty of spots to turn around on mine.
You don't have a forty two foot.
No, no, but the thing is, just because we have it.
You can get a truck and trailer up here.
I was gonna say, I can get.
You're over fifteen percent pitch, you do not have a forty two foot circle. All of our driveways fail.
Well, mine's only ten and a half, ten feet, ten and a half feet wide.
Yeah, you fail, and you pitch your over ten.
Yours is only ten feet wide.
With my little car, I would do a whole point turn.
I, I brush.
So anyway, my thought is it should be five hundred feet.
Why don't we pump my four hundred feet?
What do the other towns say?
Those are all, those are all towns that mostly don't have five acres owning in three hundred foot.
What do they say?
The most of those are three hundred.
What's the five acres got to do with it?
Cause our driveway's a longer.
Yeah, but that's mostly because of wetlands.
I don't know, I can take you up and show you some that are fifty five feet long on Guy Little Road. So, there's a setback.
Alright, let's, let's table that one for now, keep going, Dave.
The only other one we have is driveways exceeding eight hundred feet in length, need a turnaround. A turnout approximately midpoint, I made that one a thousand feet, I made five hundred and a thousand. That was the only.
That's why I was going four hundred and make, max to eight hundred, so I was bringing, leave that eighteen the way it is, leave it at eight hundred and make it four hundred feet, that way it'd be.
Your thought?
Didn't we already address that, driveway exceeding, we did that on his. The eight hundred feet over here.
No, he hasn't, he wants to change it to a thousand feet, from eight hundred to a thousand.
I know, but we already worked on it, because we asked what size the width for the turnout should be.
Yeah, but we didn't work on the length of it, just what he said. So he wants to go from five hundred to four hundred instead of three hundred, is what Mike is saying. I don't mind doing that, I just think three hundred's way too short.
Four hundred would match eighteen, where you have to have a turnaround midpoint too.
Do you think, I thought midpoint it should be a thousand feet to have the, uh, that's, that's a turnout, a turnaround.
I understood.
Yeah.
Comments from the road agent?
Comments from the road agent?
I didn't see anything wrong with the way they were.
Okay. I have been to the fire department here, let's, let's see what. Eight hundred feet?
Okay, well look at eight hundred feet then.
Yeah.
And four hundred feet on the other one? That's what I think it should be, three hundred feet's way too short.
So three hundred feet, it's all the neighborhood, in other words, every driveway in my neighborhood would have to have a, a turnaround.
Not everyone.
Well, no, on my, on my side of the street.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have a turnaround?
I have a T.
Okay, that counts. Well, that counts, that's part of the turnaround, can be a T, X, Y, or circle.
Yeah, what?
Forty foot in two directions.
No, it's not quite that. But, but, but this is not going right where I, this is going for new ones. Um, it's not about me anyways, I just wanna make sure we're not putting too obvious rig.
That's what I wanna say too, is I don't, I don't wanna overburden.
Agreed.
I wanna do something, and I think it's a step in the right direction, but I think.
I'd say four hundred feet is a compromise to start.
I think four hundred.
I think four hundred, I think the forty foot legs is just quite a bit to be at the end of a three hundred foot drive.
Right.
Two forty foot legs, so you gotta basically have the driveway plus forty, maybe have a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Nobody would be able to do that.
Doesn't count the driveway?
Well, it says forty foot leg, so.
So that being said.
Include the driveway.
Back out of your garage, cause it's twenty feet long, you can't stop turning until you're back out of your garage, and then this twenty feet to try and get out is forty feet.
That being said, number seventeen has to be four hundred feet.
Forty feet each way.
Yes.
That's what he meant.
Yes, agreed.
So that being said, number seventeen needs to be four hundred feet also.
Lean, do you have that?
Yeah.
Okay. Hash through all that, I'm gonna put this in a bundle for you, Lean.
And we're coming, as to quote the fire chief, we're coming out of the wild, wild west, we're getting, we're getting into civilization.
Well, the worst problem is, this hasn't been a problem until the last couple of years.
Well, we have a lot of rope in this.
Now, the people that are selected in the building, they don't really have it, like Fred was saying, they haven't installed the Mr. Up.
Well, like you said, it's not the, the person building the house, it's the person buying the house after they build it.
Yes.
And then they're trying to turn around, or they get emergency services or something like that.
But the lots.
This is required in the upfront, at the beginning.
Yeah. And, and this will, this is, they put the thing in here, to get a CO, you have to have this complete, uh meeting requirements, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, but we've had that anyway.
Yeah, we just haven't had regulations.
No regulations, but you still have to get your driveway signed.
True, true. Fred.
Yeah, how, how can you enforce the turnaround? Ninety nine percent of the time we go on a call, fire ambulance, there's other cars or trucks parked there, we're gonna back out anyhow. Or back in.
I wouldn't know.
Come at the very end.
Last one is first one I would.
Okay, wait, wait, wait a minute, is it a classics road, you don't have to go down it, it's gonna burn. Stop right there.
Stop right there, can't go down this classics road.
You get some house lots in town, I don't know how we're gonna get down the toll.
Yeah, for sure. You just spray the water from the top of the road, right, you're basically.
Forty feet off the house, off the road, so you probably wouldn't be driving down.
We just spray.
Point of order, point of order here. Give me the gavel.
Coming to your head.
I'm gonna bring an update on um. Mike, you weren't here for the last meeting, but we had a, we had um. People come in from the old Route thirteen, Holmes Road, and just told them.
Yes, I understood, I read the minutes.
And um. He brought us in and gave us a copy of the complaint, um, actually Chris provided for us. And just in question, the officer went out to the site, saw the car and trailer parked in the wrong, or truck and trailer in the wrong position. But he did not tell us what he did or not. And um, what Joe said was, sounded correct, he didn't do anything. So, I spoke with Chris, cause I asked him to come to a non-public so we could kinda talk through this, and speak with Chris is um. The officer has been spoken to um about, if it is in the right way, it is blocking that roadway, it should be moved.
I followed up on that same item.
I'm not done.
Okay, but I, I followed up on the same item.
Okay, so, it was not. Um, it was at the time of night.
Nine, nine o'clock at night.
Eight forty, and he just, the officer decided it wasn't an emergency to move the vehicle at that time of night. He's since been talked to and has been explaining the situation, and been given a copy of our regulation that we made sure to set up with him. And now they know that even if it's that late at night, to make sure the roadway is open. And so, he's gonna provide a letter that we can submit and give to Joe Soul explaining that, he's been spoken to about it, he was a newer officer.
Okay.
And uh, he's gonna provide that letter, so I saw no need for him to come into us.
I, I, I talked to him with, or I heard about the meeting, I talked to him, I asked him to call you, he should call you.
He does, yeah. So, he had another engagement tonight, and that worked out fine.
Yeah, I, I figured, just to clear the area, by calling you, let, let, let them know the weather requirements were, he was gonna make sure you run up to the entire force as a reminder. One of those morning meetings they have.
Well, what I didn't want to have happen is a lot of times, you get a lot of calls on some of these things and they become what people think of civil matters. And parts of it may be civil, but when somebody is in the right of way and they are blocking it, it needs to be taken care of also. And so.
I guess the argument is doing living down that end in this, in the middle of the night.
No, it was parked on this side of Holmes, not on the, not on the old classic.
Oh, this side.
This side.
Okay.
Now, um, and, and Joe also said if it was parked on his side of the roadway, he had no problem with it parked on, on Joe's side. Um, there was a sign.
One thing I, I wanna bring up with the whole situation that the chief talked to me about, uh, we'd have to go before the town meeting. What about actually dissolving that road and having it split fifty fifty right down the middle and.
It is discontinued.
No, but completely discontinued.
But it's already split down, down the middle there.
From Holmes Road to the shack.
Oh, you're saying the first part of it?
Yeah, he lives there, uses the road to park his vehicle on, and Joe just comes in and whines about it, I've been up there a bunch of times, I've never seen a, the truck or car. Blocking the classified road, it's always on the side. We have no pa- we have no parking, we have no parking on this.
Yeah.
That's right.
They park all over town like that. In the front of the house, on the edge of the road. Those two are just going back and forth.
Now.
And it, and. It's, the whole thing's stupid, yeah, I'm fine with getting rid of the road, it doesn't make any difference to me, but. Then they'll still have to figure it out.
It does, cause to where it connects there and your corner and everything, it could be messy, I'd rather just keep it in the town.
I, I don't know, what people would give it up or not, they wouldn't before.
No.
Cause they built the house there, and that was how he accessed his house.
Yeah.
When the state split the road on, and John Mills built the house, that's how he accessed his house, so they blocked the road there.
It'd be a driveway, they had private driveway after that, half of it.
After you get down, you get down there all the ways, it splits down the middle, I guess, I don't know.
All the butters still have right to use it, so it'd be the same situation going on. At least this way we have some rights.
Right.
To make sure it's open.
There's some, well, I guess it'd be stupid, where's the ambulance gonna go, if the ambulance is gonna go to that house?
I'm trying to keep it moving, but the next thing is.
Yeah.
There's a sign on the telephone pole on the left side.
Yep.
Says no trespassing.
Yep, says do not enter.
Do not enter.
Yeah.
That, for one, can't be on the telephone pole and it shouldn't be on the road.
I got the letter, I'm not going up there and taking the sign down, simple as that, I'm not doing it. I went up and met Mitch, I gave him the letter, I said, do me a favor, take that sign down.
Oh, you did talk to him, okay.
I don't know if he took it down or not, I said, I'm not here to take your sign down, I'm not getting involved with this bullshit, cause that's all it is. It's on a telephone pole, there are signs on telephone poles all over the town, Joe knows he can go down there. I, I, it's just a game. So I don't know, you want, send somebody up to take the, the sign down, I'm not doing it.
Okay.
You go do it.
Alright, so.
I went up and spoke to Mitch, showed him the letter. I s- and he said, oh, they got you involved now, I said, yeah, but I'm not here to take your sign down, I'm asking you if you would take your sign down and put it somewhere else. Whether he did or not, I don't know.
Check.
And I said, don't shoot the messenger.
No, I, it's just, you guys wanna play this game, go right ahead.
No.
It's, it's, this, signs all over placed on telephone poles.
And technically, it's, it's.
Joe has signs in the right way up there himself, from his house, that's okay?
I don't know, I haven't been up there.
Yeah.
I'll go check it.
Yeah.
Okay, we're done that section, now we're on to mailbox items. I've got, the first thing here is an audit questionnaire, I filled out the chairman's portion of it. And I've put some asterisks on some items that Lean has to give them a copy of. Um, mostly our policies, there are some signatures on years of service required for each of the other select board members. Um, if you guys can fill that out, I'll keep going on the mailbox items. Mike, this is more for you to take a quick look at and give back to Lean, when you were gone last week, we had to give Ja- um. John Wigan the approval to get the um ambulance going. And I signed the contract today as chairman.
Okay.
So that's just for you to look at and give back to Lean if you could. Cause you're right, I wanted to provide that for you.
Thank you.
As a suggestion, please.
Okay.
Is that page right there?
Did you find an ambulance, I, I take it he did.
Yes, he did. And he found one for the right budget, and it was only one company, the other two companies didn't provide him with pricing.
The night, neat thing is not coming from taxation.
Yeah. Um, we had agreed upon this um. Having Lean update this policy for the um solid waste operators train certificate, to get our money back. And.
You made some, we improved that, I.
Yeah, and she made the improvements, but we never signed it, so.
Right, it's a house, I understand it's housekeeping?
Yeah.
Cause I recall Dave, you weren't happy with the first one.
No. This will be for Justin.
Justin, you need to sign that.
Um, I signed some paperwork here for us to uh. Some bereavement paperwork here for the town offices, that's taken care of.
Okay.
Request was in. Uh, we have overtime expense here, Lean has given to me to follow up with the transfer station. Uh, because of our turnover employment, we've been using a little bit of overtime up. And we also have to keep a comp time week out as well, so there's just under three thousand remaining of overtime budget. The comp time will take away some of that, the remaining balance will be seventeen oh five, so I'm gonna show that Woody and just make sure he's aware of it. We had a question come up, um, that we had uh NHMA give us a legal response from regarding the town forest committee. They wanted to make sure they could legally negotiate from the town under Article sixteen on the March meeting. And he said that they can negotiate the price of good paint as long as they don't purchase it until time meeting. So that lot could be negotiated by them, it sounds like.
So in other words, um. In the past, they bought items.
Yes, using their funds.
Right, so they can't buy it until approved by the town meeting?
But they can negotiate it from what he said.
Okay, at this past town meeting, in that article, we, that, we approved uh them to go make the purchase. After they do negotiations, I, I seem to recall.
Let me read, in accordance with RSA thirty one one thirteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town forest committee to negotiate the purchase for town lot number J two O one O seven. Containing forty four acres more or less, using unrestricted funds now at the committee's disposal. And dedicate the same to town forest, and furthermore to convert the other three lots.
See, that's negotiate the purchase, not negotiate the price, so that one should go through right now, cause the town meeting is already proven. Future ones will have, again, if there's something coming up, then it goes to the town meeting, but that's, they're gonna negotiate that purchase. Purchase is not the sale price, the purchase. So I, I, I disagree with what they say, that we don't have to go back to them for that particular piece.
Let me put this down, from the town attorney, hello Lean. Unlike the conservation commission, a forestry committee does not have the authority to enter into land purchases on behalf of the town. Now, what this means is that the actual purchase must be done with the approval of the town meeting and select board. However, you mentioned negotiating, not purchasing, there would be nothing wrong with the forestry committee negotiating on a price for a piece. Of land as long as they have the select board approval, and the ultimate decision was made by the board, not the committee. So that was his answer back to us, I was under the same understanding as Mike, that we were trying to give them the permission to purchase it. Now, I know that they can't purchase it on behalf of the town, but their funds are not town funds, right?
No, they're not.
That's what he's not telling us in here, and I think it's a gray area, we have to explain to him somehow that these are not town funds, they're town forest funds.
And that's what it says in the town, in the town, in the report, funds and they're just.
Right, but he's not answering it that way to us.
No, and it's.
He's leaving a gray coming back.
And, and he talks about negotiate the price, it's not negotiate, they're gonna negotiate the price, but we gave him negotiate the, the purchase, we said the purchase specifically, that word purchase was in there.
And he says they do not have the authority to enter into land purchase on behalf of the town.
No, but we gave him permission to do, negotiate to the purchase, that was the words out of the warrant.
At the town meeting.
And you did a lot specific.
Yeah, it was, it was.
It's not like he could take that authority and go to another lot.
Correct, with a specific lot.
And I told Lean, by looking at her questions here, it's not clear, but she said she provided a copy of the town meeting to him.
I gave him that, that.
Is that answered?
Do you understand our question to ask him again?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's already been approved at town meeting.
Right.
They shouldn't have the authority to do it now, and make sure he knows it's their funds, not the town's funds.
Which I think, which I think is a, a, a good point, but I don't think that, the point is, we already gave them the. Borned purchase, the permission purchase, it wasn't we, it wasn't the select board, it was the actual, the legislative body.
And just let them know it was down.
Said in the email, I said it was voted and passed at town meeting.
Right, shouldn't have to be redone, I don't think, although there is no dollar mark on there, so he might, he might come up with some things.
Well, we gave, when you negotiate the purchase, that includes negotiating the price.
I, I wanna make sure he knows that it's their funds too, which are separate.
Which attorney was this, was this our attorney or the NHMA?
NHMA.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not our attorney, it's the NHMA.
Uh, we got a comment from the forestry committee.
Yeah, uh, I, I agree with what Mike's saying, because we did not have a set price at the time, we went to town meeting.
Right.
And we were not negotiating the price, we were negotiating a purchase.
Right.
If we could agree on the price. And that's, and that's, that was, that was, was approved by the legislative body, which is.
That's how it's written in there too.
Yeah.
And it was very particular about.
It says to negotiate the purchase.
Purchase, yeah, and the purchase, I mean, purchase is something, is a finality to that, you purchase something.
Maybe it needs to go to our hometown attorney.
I would, I would consider our hometown attorney.
By wasting any more time.
Right, but that was the whole purpose of putting it in the article, is to give them the flexibility, saying, yeah, we're interested in this.
But if we have to negotiate and.
The only reason it came up is one of the town forest committee members had questioned it, that's the only reason we're trying to get clarification.
Yeah.
I, I think we're, we're in the, we're in the right side here, I just, I think if, they're just, they give us a general answer rather than reading the specifics.
Really wanna get the second opinion?
Go to our town meeting.
Okay.
Send them all that same paperwork and get the right answer. Um, the next thing we're doing is noticing a meeting with Jeff to hold a public hearing on Thursday, June thirteenth. Beginning at seven ten for the road uh. Projects.
It's his annual meeting.
You okay with that date, Jeff?
No.
Okay.
I wanted it two weeks ago, but you guys don't meet.
They'll be at our meeting during our meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, Lean, the only thing I have on here, it doesn't say what the public hearing is for.
Road projects.
I know, you keep telling.
The various road projects throughout the town.
Oh, there it is.
You're supposed to read everything.
He does, he reads all of it. I assigned it to you. You read all of that paper?
At every letter.
Every one, yeah. I saw the address there and I didn't think that, that should be a print.
Can read every letter.
Okay, I stand corrected, thanks for figuring that out. Okay, we have a zoning board a butter notification for variance on D three oh two oh three dash one hundred. Stark Highway South to retain an existing dwelling known as the Cottage. So there's an applicant that is going to the zoning board, uh that wants to have two accessory dwellings on the property. And uh, we'll see how that comes up.
We're just being notified because we're in a butter for the pro- uh, for this property?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We have a report here from Superior Fire Protection. Um. Uh for the sprinkler system in the town hall buildings, gonna be done once a year. It was done, it looks like everything passes, uh their graph doesn't show. Um, that the allowable pressure stays up there, so it says it passed, I just asked Lynn for some clarification on the, on the draft. On the graph, what they have there. We got this week, a letter of recognition in for Dan, Daniel Philbrook.
Yeah.
Right, two officers.
Police department, um, he responded to a medical emergency, he was the first one on the scene. Immediately recognized that the patient was showing signs in his experience of an active stroke. He relayed this critical information to fire EMS dispatch, so the responding ambulance could properly and swiftly render assistance. Um, the same day they received an email from the patient's husband's. Uh, they said they're spending the nights. At C H, Concord Hospital.
Yeah.
Just for authorization, please pass along the appreciation of your officer's concerns as well, he was very calming. It's great to have those kind of things in the file.
Yeah.
And that's it for the mailbox items, coming back for public comment. Fred, you got anything else?
Nope.
Jeff?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to Lynn.
All I have today to report is that um, I was asked to participate in mediation to settle with EverSource. Um. We uh, we did not settle, um so it's still pending, I did speak to George San Souci.
Tell us you didn't win.
No, I did. Um, but George San Souci reassured me that um he would meet the um appraisal report, which are due to the courts for July first. And that our town is part of a pool of that of forty-three to forty-five towns still that have not settled. So we're definitely going to court in September, um but with that appraisal report, he's hoping that the judges will be able to. Uh provide a, a decision for everyone to settle by, so.
Using the rate we're using now, hopefully.
Yep, yep, there's a lot of factors in there. Um, the new um methodology was applied, was reviewed in two thousand eighteen, adopted in two thousand nineteen. And um, he had already been applying the new um methodology in two thousand nineteen, so.
So it's, the appraisal is done by the twenty nineteen methodology, which they agreed to, and now they're saying they don't wanna do it.
You know, our attorney, our representative will provide an appraisal, theirs could not provide the matching reconciliation. To um, that would support that request for their settlement and it was true.
Okay, bring it back to Justin.
Nothing. Mike? I just wanna say the memorial day activities, uh sponsored by the American Legion, Boys Scouts, Girls Scouts, and the Revolutionary War, uh various groups, successful. I had a great crowd, I think it built uh here on the common and cemetery. And they had, ended the afternoon with the Hopkins and Band, uh and they was uh filling up the auditorium at the community center pretty much. And that, and it wasn't the same people, I had another group of people come in and enjoy the uh, the concert. And uh, one of our citizens received a war, uh award from the uh Revolutionary Committee about this, a good citizen war for. Help me out there, what award did he get?
Um, he got a bronze, a bronze uh, uh award for his outstanding work for veterans. By his wre- wreaths over Dunbarton, the flags over Dunbarton.
This is Donald Larson.
John, this Donald Larson, it was from the uh Sons of the American Revolution, they were, they, won the recognized Don for all his outstanding work over the years.
Done a lot with that.
This is a state statewide award.
Wow.
So kudos are gone.
Yeah.
And uh, and I thought uh, the American, the American Legion did a great job, uh putting it all together.
Did you make the cemetery meeting to, uh for reviewing the Scoopio site there?
No, didn't even know about it.
Oh, you did, okay, I thought you would see.
That's uh, gonna be October nineteenth.
Yeah, that's when they're doing it, but they're reviewing it up here.
Yeah.
And I thought he'd be on the cemetery, you're on the cemetery committee still, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, maybe I just didn't read the.
Don't put black on that block. Okay.
Why, when is it?
It's all.
Don't only, only tell me half of it.
Fred, Fred, what is the meeting, it was this week, wasn't it?
Yeah, um, they're also gonna buy, ask the Slutman, I think, to make a speech down here, so. Right now it's still in flux, it's, the uh, the, the black, the hatchet black heritage trail people are the ones in charge. And our liaison is Donald Dunn to go through it.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're in the process of putting stuff together for it.
I'm the darkest Slutman, I wouldn't be ready to.
But it's, it's gonna be October nineteenth.
Okay. Thank you, Fred.
Thanks.
And that's all I had, David.
Thank you, Mike. Sorry to hop off on you, I was trying to catch him.
Oh, no, 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 it's uh.
I know I missed my public comment session, but Lynn made me think of it when she was talking about EverSource. Were you gonna, were with that dog and pony show with Community Power or?
It'll be.
Anything about that.
It'll be.
They have to sit there, if I could.
I went to the meeting. Um, I better go into the meetings. So Community Power right now, our whole program is up at the PUC waiting for approval. And so our, our dates hopefully for setting, getting power will be the end of June, beginning of July is for us, for our rates are gonna be. You know, they're gonna be setting our rates and so we're waiting for that to come back from them. And meanwhile, they're watching the rates because a lot of these other towns are trying to get into it. Like right now, Merrimack County is a county, is trying to do the same thing we did as a town. And um, they said the, we wouldn't benefit getting into that program because they're so far behind us that by the time. Merrimack County is gonna be getting that rate, it's gonna be in the winter months, so they.
I just wanna remember when I gotta sign back up with EverSource. I don't wanna miss it.
Will be till fall, I'll make sure you know.
Will we get.
You're gonna get a postcard, yes you will.
That's all I want. Cause I remember we had to get on the bandwagon, cause it was the greatest.
Oh, yeah.
Greatest thing since sliced bread.
Yeah. So um. I, I just wanna make a couple of notes here for myself.
Propane one, did you get on the propane?
No.
One, two, that came in a few weeks.
We're not gonna let him on that one either, I'm not interested in that. I went to the concert with Lager Songs up here uh on Tuesday, Fred was up there.
Did you sing?
Uh, I did sing a little bit, not a lot, not so anybody could hear me. But um, I will say it was a, it was a nice concert. And I, I heard no echoing up there, did you hear any?
Yeah, a little bit, but not, not somewhat, there was less once you opened the windows.
Yeah.
I heard it was cold.
Yeah.
It was cool, but I, I heard no echoing or anything, I thought, I thought it was fine.
Yeah.
I mean, the guy played five different instruments or six instruments right in front of us there and.
Yeah.
I thought we could hear fine, he went on the stage and down on the bottom and.
And we don't have the stage curtains yet.
No.
And so stage curtains will add some mo- a, a buffer.
I'm clicking, it will.
Yeah.
You are a salesman.
No, but I don't, I don't, I don't think we have to go crazy with the uh, with additional curtains.
Selling for the windows.
Gary Shicoin called me this week, uh we had talked about something last year, doing the two front um portico rails that are rotted. Remember last year? Um, he might have a spot in between jobs for his guy, Bobby that did the other ones to come up and do those two front ones.
I thought Bobby wanted to do it as an independent contractor.
He did.
And but, uh why is Mr. Shicoin getting involved again?
Cause he can do it during work hours and just like he did the other one.
Okay, makes sense, okay.
So.
I just wanna make sure we, we wanna, if we can save some dollars, we can.
Well, I'd kinda rather have him do it for you, um, he has insurance and everything, you know? So that's what I was thinking would be better.
Is he gonna provide a quote for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if, if anyone is seeing the uh, the difference between the uh, the, the back one is unbelievably nice and the front one's are just like.
Well, I made a PVC, the other ones are wooden, they're rotten.
They're really rotting.
Um.
You're gonna get that tree this year?
Mike, I wrote that down tree again. I write it every week, I don't know where this people.
Forest right here.
Yeah.
I don't know about.
Two, two of them here, yeah.
We told them, we, we gave him.
I was gonna say it was approved for what, a year and a half, two years?
We gave him a.
It's in his ballpark.
And he was gonna look it up. He gave me no time limit. No, we, we think it's.
It's in, it's in Dave's ballpark.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, I went up to look at the cracked footings at the transfer station stolen panel. Woody kept telling me there's some issues, we better look at it before we buy it. There is um.
You're not gonna buy them, are you?
Not till about seventeen months, we're not gonna buy it. So anyway, um one of them did drop down a couple of inches, um and the panels are rubbing there. So I'd like to have you make a phone call to that company and have them come and. Either pin it or adjust the panels, but the panels are binding a little bit.
As, as a point of order, if we get no response from them, then they, they're stuck with those used panels, we, we do not have to extract. Put that into the contract whenever we negotiated the contract, that we are in no obligation to execute against them.
Yep.
So if it, if it, if they're gonna be sloppy with not maintaining them now, I'm saying, maybe we don't pay.
Footings that they have to fix with pins?
The footings and the panels are binding against each other now.
And next, after they bind, they crack next.
Yeah, they aren't cracked yet.
Alright.
Okay, I just placed a call to Brookside about the um, Mitsubishi's over there. The thermostat's not operating, I did it just before the meeting tonight, they're supposed to get ahold of me tomorrow, I called them direct, cause. We haven't heard anything back from that girl. Okay. Um, concrete of the transfer station. Um, we had talked with some companies last year. I had mentioned it to um. I had mentioned to um, who's uh?
Corrie?
No.
Corrie.
Cor- Corrie at Wolf's Demolition. About taking that concrete out of there, I think you might have talked to her at the same time.
I talked to her, I had, gave Woody the name and number to reach out and I said.
Woody keeps saying he doesn't call him back, but he's always called me right back, so.
I know, he usually answers for me.
I'll try and circle out and get him back down.
He was trying to get me out of it, so I didn't have to meet them there, when Woody's open, they could figure out.
The time to figure out.
Cause Cory's pretty flexible, though. He just wanted to drill for the thickness to see how thick that pad was to give her, us a better est- estimate.
My last note of the day was to see what the road agent was gonna do on the sign on Old Route thirteen.
Yep.
Absolutely nothing. Okay.
Alright, that's what I'm gonna do.
Last one?
Yeah, uh, I got a phone call this evening from the uh Lance surveying company, they're gonna plan maybe next week to. Get that town monument in Bowe Dunbarton line.
Oh, okay.
Clinton Street.
Yeah, Bo's already agreed to go fifty percent, so it's just in accord to schedule it.
Okay, good. Motion to adjourn?
Second.